And so, the cost of that estimated by Mike on it is approximately ninety thousand dollars to run that full lane.
Nine zero?
Yes, ninety.
Are we bidding that out?
We will.
Okay.
We'll design it and bid it, we're not building it. It's very, it's very large.
I wouldn't wanna do it, so.
Tim, what's the height difference there?
From what's that?
To, when you get level above it, at the highest point, from grade.
Oh, was that probably twelve, fourteen degrees?
Yeah. So, and there's just with these storms and everything else, it just continues to eat away. So, we need to, to rectify that. Let's throw one big cost down there, again, not a lot of revenue to be generated by the side lights in there anymore. Senior shuttle, this one tends to zero itself out. Katrina down at the senior center keeps track of this, and so we'll continue to run the senior shuttle here in town at her direction. Moving on to the senior center, nothing particularly huge or there. She is gonna redo some chairs and try to get some grant funds for that, but all of her chairs need to be redone. So, approximately ten thousand for that one, that's probably her big one for the year. Normal standard inspections and Katrina does a great job on down there, I mean, navigating covid over the last year with seniors was a huge, huge endeavor. And she's done it and been able to secure grant funds and other things to make up revenue, loss from like the potato bake and things like that. Continues to provide great programming for seniors and lead on other senior centers across the region. So, it does it out on an island, I mean, she kinda has to report, keep track of that facility twenty-four seven while she's there. Utilize her volunteer help, and so we really appreciate all the hard work that Katrina puts in down there. Next up is street. Street budget, got our highway allocation in there, motor vehicle taxes, continuing to see good revenue back in vehicle taxes. All those cars that are missing from every lot we can ever drive past, so apparently somebody in Seward buying them. But, we're trying to be conservative on those revenue projections. And then we have again our transfer there from the general fund, that's to even this budget off, I believe that should zero this out, is that correct Nick, if it goes bottom?
Actually, it zeros the fund balance out, so you'd have to look at the cash spreadsheet to see that.
But that's what that transfer is that's highlighted there.
Okay, who's distribution? O and M. I two two one one?
That, that's all street employees, correct? And then, facilities, O and M, obviously there's no seller related to that. There's no admin one of this, well, there's a little bit of admin at the bottom, but first, facilities.
And utilities, and the city use utilities? Is that like, streetlights and stuff like that, or why is that so expensive? Versus a high percentage, as you say, for their department? What line are you on? Um, five two two, five two two one six? Of city use utilities.
I don't know what else they have in there, but definitely their, their building over here.
Yep, uh, literally natural gas over there, for one. Where would that be at, Nick?
Uh, natural gas.
Up one six two three.
Uh, I don't see that they have it.
And that's what I think why.
Cause your light turn, five two two, five two.
The reason I think they're city use utilities is I don't think they have natural gas over there, so they're electric heat. We're paying us rather than the.
It is your, yeah, the street.
That building's, is not energy efficient.
Lights were in there and like the ones on the buildings and all that kinda stuff were included in there?
The ones on the buildings, those aren't in the city, we don't pay those.
S C C D P pays that.
And then some of them are actually the building owners.
Yeah. That's not in the city budget.
Yeah.
That's all private.
Where's it metered from?
Different points, some of their, like I said, some of the meters are just around, and then some of it's metered inside of people's buildings, and then some of people just pay. Each one, it's a hodgepodge.
You know if you pay, right?
What?
You know if you pay.
Well, I presume. It is not uniform.
Greg, which department gets built for the street lights and then, that's street department? Or does the city pay that?
Yeah, there was, I remember that a lot.
Yeah, there's some, there was a very specific one for that one.
That's all right, you didn't have to spend time on it, just curious.
The, the poles and the lights themselves are.
With the electricity.
Or.
Electricity.
I don't know how you'd meter that. Right?
We do collect revenue for it from ourselves.
Yep, we do charge ourselves for it.
Yeah, you have to pay F P B for it, for the, for the Tristine Light, but I don't know how you'd meter all those real ones.
There's a way they did, I can get more detail from Larry on it.
Nick has accounting meters.
We'll need a new drone, just a meter all around each other. Drone, use drone.
Well, Nick's looking for some of that. Capital improvements. Again, annual street repairs of fifty thousand, ADA continues to be an issue, um, street crossing, uh, we push, they're doing it right now. So, but we're gonna try and give them to Billis next year. That's a two-year, that's been sitting there for two years in the budget.
Are we gonna talk about the sidewalk stuff later, or is that?
This is where you put it.
Okay, so is it in there, did you put anything in there?
It is not in, there's nothing in there right now, cause we never got far enough to.
You talking about the downtown sidewalks?
No, I'm just talking, no, I'm talking, I am talking about the, hold on, I wrote it down. One point six million dollars worth of sidewalks that are missing in town, that's what I'm talking about.
This is where you would place that, it's right here. We never got far enough along in formulating a program to give you a number of what we get them to tackle. You could set aside some money here and then we could come back and allocate it based on a program if you're ready to do that.
Well, I think we should, I personally think we should put some money in somewhere for it, but, I mean, I guess my question would be, is there money available for it? And what would that look like?
It's up to you, it's how much you wanna spend down the cash we have.
I guess what, what the flavor of the council would be on that then.
I think it definitely needed.
But, have we determined that who's gonna be paying for it?
I think that's why it's not in here.
Yeah, we haven't gotten far enough to say, where are we prioritizing, are we doing it fifty fifty, is it a long program?
Yeah, we haven't had that discussion, so when, when would you have that discussion?
I think, I think, I, at this point, a recommendation would probably be is to let's hold off on this for right now. We can look and see what other funding sources there might be as far as grants, and then come back to the council with a program similar to what we did with D T R and others. Where we can say, look, here's how much funds are available, here's what, you know, how much we still need, do you wanna have a match? Do you wanna, do you wanna do a grant, or do you want, you know, how do you wanna, how do you wanna incentivize this? And then, how much are we gonna do a certain dollar amount the first wave, then we run out, we run out? Cause we don't really wanna have it open-ended, cause if you're gonna do a match and all of a sudden, everybody wants to do it, we don't wanna have that situation either, so.
But didn't we also have a conversation at council meeting a couple, maybe it was two weeks ago or a month ago, about public safety aspects, and what that looked like?
Especially with the school.
With schools starting?
Yeah, but we've had this issue for the last decades, so.
I'm just asking, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, like, for example, like, um, on, well, athlete in Colterman Avenue, if you want to talk about that one, for example.
Sure, sure, let's talk about that one.
I mean, as you're coming from elementary school, I mean, there is, there's a house on corner that has zero sidewalks.
Right.
And, you know, and you have kids who are walking down the middle of the street, but that's not a new problem. That was one of the reasons I brought this forward to the city several years ago, is to start doing that, an audit, to see how many sidewalks are missing.
And that's when they determined, we did an audit and we have one point six million dollars.
Well, and, and we're not even talking about those that are, are any different pair.
Right, that's just missing, correct?
Yeah, so the question is, if that's, if this is something that we wanna put forward, we should probably have a comprehensive plan. And then the question is, if those who don't participate, are we going to make it mandatory at some point? Because that's where the issue was decades ago, when, when, when the city tried to do a program, is they, they said, okay, you all have to put in sidewalks. Well, some did, some didn't, and the city never went back and enforced it on those who didn't, which upset people who spent the money and did it, thinking that's not fair. So, we don't wanna make this, I mean, so far, our, my philosophy has been, when it comes to these types of projects, and especially with businesses, we'll get into that here with like the downtown district specifically, is I don't wanna enforce anything on people, but the problem is, this is a little bit of a different scenario, because they're supposed to have it, and they don't. So, how heavy-handed do you wanna be, you know, from the city standpoint of enforcing this? Do you wanna, uh, and that's what my, my thought at this point, my suggestion would be is not bogged down this process right now, because there's just too many questions. But, the city, we can look at what options there are for funding and prioritizing, and then, and then come back with a program that people can participate in, and, and go from there. But, I really think at some point, you're gonna have to make this mandatory if you wanna do this, because you're gonna run the same problem you ran in before, which is some will and some won't, and you're just gonna make those who do mad.
I'm fine with doing, looking at a comprehensive program, I, I just wanna make sure that if we do need to put some money, I mean, if we wanna move forward and we do wanna put some money in, we have that placeholder in there, that's my.
If you don't put anything in the budget now, you will not do anything for the next year, correct Nick?
I wasn't a chair.
That's why I'm, that's why I brought it up.
Blame Chris, I didn't break it.
I didn't break it.
Well, if you might, what, say, just for curiosity, is like a half million in, where would that come from?
Cash reserves of the general fund.
So, we need, our four million sitting in there minus? Four eight would be.
I was just, yeah.
I, I'm just, just that's, yeah, what, what kind of are you thinking of?
May, may I offer a suggestion, though? That's a, a large amount of money to spend on the sidewalk, and it would really burden us to try to spend that much. So, I would suggest a more moderate amount of hundred thousand, hundred and fifty thousand.
I didn't have any amount of money at all.
Yeah, I, I'm just curious.
That's okay, I just.
The other one is just all the administrative work that's gonna go into making the program and stuff, but we could solve it in a small amount, fifty thousand or a hundred thousand, just to get a pilot going. With whatever project you come up with, and then you have some funds to see how people react to it.
I was thinking a hundred and fifty, that's a good number, Mike.
John, what did you say?
Everybody's gonna want part of it, and then we're gonna run short, and then we're gonna, we're gonna make people upset. I, I think we need to really step back and take a better look at this, kinda like what Josh says. I know we talked about this before, that we've got some people now on the city that know how to do grants. Now, I really think we really need to investigate grants before we start digging into the funds.
We'll gladly look into that, but here's what I wanna tell you, cause I've been in municipal government for ten years, if there was a magical fund out there that was giving away money to put in sidewalks, every city in every municipality would know where it was. Even the Safe Routes to Schools grants, which is your best one, it predominantly wants to do signage, painting, ADA crossings, uh, things like that. They're not gonna just fund, hey, private landowner that was supposed to have a sidewalk in your yard, here's some money to go put in what you're supposed to have anyways, and you're responsible for it.
I, I know, but we put a hundred thousand in there, how are we gonna justify this?
Well, if you put together a program.
First come, first served.
Or, or a program based on some criteria related to safety, I mean, there's a lot of things you could put a program together around, and wouldn't that be the, could you have the, I mean, could you even have like the traffic committee or whatever, is that what's that called?
I just don't think we're gonna solve this tonight.
I agree, I was.
And I, yeah, I, I agree, cause I think what we're seeing now is what we still need to hash out before we even put this into a lot, like, whether we can earmark it, say, zero dollars, so we know it's in the budget going into next year, but I don't think we're in a position to even really go forward with it at this point.
Your street. It's gonna be backwards.
Multiple miles of it, I'm talking.
Again, all, all I'm stating is, if that is something that you wouldn't wanna spend dollars on the next fiscal year, if it's not identified here, there's no funds for it. Unless we slid something around, I mean, we have ADA sidewalk, but ten thousand dollars isn't gonna, and that's really designed for the city to pay for the, the corners and the ADA.
ADA compliance stuff.
Compliance stuff that we work on when we go in and resurface and do roads and stuff like that, so.
We can just amend the budget, right Greg?
Oh, yeah.
Next link.
Technically you can, that's actually true, you guys could overspend it, and then we can amend it the previous budget, so.
I'm fine with waiting a year, as long as we work over the course of a year to put together the comprehensive program.
Agreed. Uh, we'll just run through the other big ones, we've got some rail cupids items we wanna continue to work on with some drainage, uh, that's a stormwater issue, so we wanna put it here. Uh, we have design work to get started on the Bluff Road Bridge over Plum Creek, we wanna get started on that now, so that we are shovel-ready for that infrastructure bill that's coming down the pipeline. We think Bluff Road Bridge, Hillcrest Bridge, is our best project for the infrastructure dollars.
And that's us, not county?
That is us.
We looked into that.
It was a mess.
We know that.
Uh, we have East Seward Street, that's a project we're coordinating in, with the county on, uh, continuing the design phase for that. East Hillcrest, which will be from Hill, uh, East Ridge down to, uh, the trail, and we've been working with Concordia on that project for the design of that, finishing that up.
Greg, just for, the East Seward Street is to continue paving east from where we're at, not on what we have a meeting.
Yes, yes. It's not the one we have the meeting on either.
Just wanted to make sure we cut that.
That project is not gonna be touched. Uh, we have Carol, Carol K Box Culvert, this is the box culvert, uh, for the drainage that goes by the Legion Field underneath Carol K into Plum Creek, uh, sports complex down there. If you look onto the east side of that, it's the city's waterfall, it's a great feature we have, but not safe for the runway. So, we're gonna get to work on fixing that, and then we have some alley repairs, uh, on some gravel alleys that we have. And then Pine Wood Avenue has, especially down by the high school, essentially up to four?
Uh, or Meadow, one of the.
Or Meadow, approximately, looking at as much resurfacing as we can do and design, uh, on Pine Wood. Cause that one, we continue to have heaves and all kinds of issues with, and there's giant cracks going right down, uh, east west of the mountain. Roberts Street improvements, and that one is to lead up to the Highway fifteen project that's coming through town. We wanna make sure that we have all the storm drainage on the peripheral streets handled, and so this is included in that. And then school crossing lights, that's just the, the flashing twenty mile an hour ones.
The school doesn't take care of that?
Nope.
Why not?
Cause it's our responsibility?
Why?
Cause we designate them? We're in charge of them, it's our street, I don't know.
There are ticket money for those.
You won't pay them off anytime soon with seven hundred bucks. Speed, speeding tickets aren't local, neither are school zone. So, none of the, none of the tickets we write for speeding in school zones come back to us. But, those are due for replacement, so, that system, if you've ever seen them blinking randomly in the middle of the night, that's one of the reasons we need to replace them. And then we just have some of our vehicles there, lease payments and different things, purchases, update plows, mowers, all the stuff that Bob's team utilizes. Uh, we also have, a big one for us is traffic counters.
We do our own tire changing at the shop?
Bob, not, we do not currently.
Why are we putting, why are we thinking about tire machine and supporting like our co-op and that and take the liability off our guys?
I don't know.
I, I'm just throwing it out, I mean, we should be supporting our businesses anyway downtown that do tire repair.
What, what liability are we taking off ourselves?
Tire blow-up?
So, we're somehow, we're, we're somehow not liable, we have a tire blown on us?
I'm just, when you change it.
I've never seen it happen.
With truck tires, yeah, cause it gets tricky.
Yeah, yeah, you use ether, you light it, and if any of the bees don't get it, yeah, you, have you ever seen anybody get hurt bad? I'm just saying, or a wrench when they're trying to pry it off the rim, slap you in the face.
We could check, but I'm pretty sure we've been doing it this way for a long time, haven't we, Greg?
They, they requested it because did you have one, two flat tires?
No, but if you're saying there's gonna be a liability or something bad's gonna happen, we've been doing it for forty years and it hasn't.
I think one of them, we need to clarify on it, is if it's automobile tires, which you don't have that volatility of doing that versus, you, you're talking heavy axle tires that do have a different process.
You're dumb truck tires.
You know which one?
Bob Myers just specified that he had two individuals who are trained in doing it, so I have no.
We'll follow up with Bob.
I, I'm just throwing it out, that why are we taking it away from a business downtown that, that's what they do?
We're just looking at the safety of our employees as well.
That's exactly right.
And the reason we'd be taking away from our business is if we could do it cheaper, not charge taxpayers more, but, we'll follow up on it, we'll let you know.
And you can still stack that. Keep going, tax increment, what are you thinking?
All right, Tim, this is just a follow-up, this is kinda just how we account for all of our TIF revenues for the year. And so you'll see some of these towards the bottom, we're not in the point where we're seeing any revenues on them. But, this is the accounting system that we utilize to, to do that. And then, I think the Plex Homes Phase Three is going away, cause we slowed all Phase Two, we building all that on once.
Are any of these maturing within this year?
No.
No?
They didn't start doing these until thirteen.
Okay.
So, to, most likely twenty twenty-eight will be your first one, you may have a few that, that pay off early, and so we might see by twenty twenty-five. I would guess that's gonna be hard though, cause most of the ones we did early, kind of were overshoots on the estimations, we're more conservative now on the TIF revenues they'll generate. We utilize a different system by going through the assessor's office. So, that's tax increment financing, lots of fun accounts and numbers there for Nick to keep track of, so. Waste water, this one also has a recommended by N M P P a three percent rate increase. One of the options that we wanted to investigate with you is looking at within that rate increase, is setting aside a facilities fee. We have the wastewater treatment plant teed up, and we're gonna try our best to secure federal funds and state funds and revolving loan funds for that. But it is a considerable expense, it is the most largest piece of capital improvement that we will expend in the entire city, correct Mike?
Correct.
Uh, we estimate that at, what?
Sixteen million.
Sixteen million, and so, if we did a rate increase, we would like to set aside either in sinking fund or somewhere else, long-term, some of these funds, so that you can identify them to the rate users and say, hey, that increase though is going to what we know as a long-term capital project that's coming down the pipeline. And preparing ourselves and our rates to cushion that a little better. So, that's why I just noted, I have that note there with the facility fee, uh, it can be, you name it, and we can look at it and give you a recommendation if that was something you're interested in as part of that rate increase, but.
Do we have to do that now, tonight?
We can do it now, or we can bring you a recommendation again, it, it doesn't change the revenue unless you said we wanna add it on top, but we would come in as part of the rate increase and say, we're gonna set in the billing, there'll literally be a facility fee, and it could be a dollar, five dollars, whatever it may be.
Okay.
And that facility fee would be set aside in the secret fund directly for the future improvements.
But that's not something we have to do within the budgetary process, I can come up and be a later, I mean, is it something that has to be specified in the budget?
We would like it to be, yes.
Okay, that's right. So.
And if you're interested in that, just kinda signal to us before the next meeting on the budget, when you approve it, we'll give you a recommendation and come up with what the dollar amount would be that we recommend.
So, we could make that next, next meeting, cause it's not gonna change the bottom.
It won't change the bottom line, unless you said, we wanna add, I wanna add right now two dollars onto this revenue.
Me, really?
No, I know, I, I'm just, I'm giving you your options.
It was a royal you. It was like the royal wing.
I feel like I'd point more when I have to wear these masks, so I apologize.
Okay, I, I'm clear, sorry.
Yeah.
And your production salaries are employees?
They are, it's a split, uh, the water and wastewater, uh, departments are a split department, so, we align some of them, and we can actually show you that for a minute. If you wanna see it, it's way up here, right Nick?
And then, are your admin?
Admin is us, billing, city hall employees, correct?
Yep, so like.
On both of those departments?
Water and wastewater?
Yep. So, the three eleven, four eleven, three eleven, four eleven would be.
As well as.
Electric.
Electric?
Yep. Is there some, you want me to break this down?
No, 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 nope.
She wants to be hired.
Yeah, I just wanna be hired.
We're hiring a police officer.
Hey, I can be one, I've watched every criminal murder.
Takes a background check, though.
All clear, I got one on my phone.
They all take background check, all, all jobs, I see.
All clear?
No, some of us see them, stuff we don't. Um, the A M I system, uh, they'll pay a portion of the water's A M I system, completely separate automated metering system from the electric department. The electric department is utilizing their own D C one, we're getting away from the twax system. Twax was designed so that the water meter communicates with the electric meter, the electric meter sends it down to the electric line, back to us. This is all radio system. Their system's actually cellular, so, that's what they'll be utilizing.
And then that portion of the plot program and the updating.
Yep, the pilot program for the.
For those three.
Yep, it's to ma- map out their wastewater lines, and this one.
Not the streets too, right?
Yep.
So Greg, I noticed on the street department, there was an eight thousand dollar gas pump as well, that they have their own, and so does wastewater?
No, 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 it's all one system.
It's all one system?
Down at wastewater.
Okay, that's what I'm doing.
It's, it's the, it's the, uh, regular letted fuel, unleaded fuel.
Right, right.
So, all dies, the diesel ones are located onsite with them, so, street has one, water, wastewater in the lead. Electric. Golf courses as well, maybe cemetery has a small.
Yeah, it's, it's gold, it's a gold car.
And then we have the wastewater treatment plant engineering, uh, we're in the process of R F Q. We fed, we did the R F Q for the engineering on this through the federal guidelines and the, the state revolving loan fund. So, if we were to secure some funding, we could go back and secure design engineering funds, but we need to keep that process moving, we can't wait for a grant to magically land on our head. So, we will continue on that, that's a significant cost.
What year are we looking at doing that project, Greg?
It is in C I P, I think it's two years out, they're right?
Uh, it would start in September seventeen, be completed next September fifteen, constructed, they would bid, uh, late next year, and be constructed, um, first quarter is, uh, twenty twenty-three through June of twenty twenty.
We have it listed in year two, but again, the costs will be spread out over a number of years. It's cash reserves, let's hear something, there we go, last budget we have, amazing.
Water!
It's water. Water, um, has a zero percent rate increase, as you saw in my memo, this is based off of the utilization of our ARPA dollars. We received our first tranche, as they call them, of six hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars. We've currently identified that for the water tower for a placement position, and then we've also received, uh, approval by the county for three hundred thousand dollars for the water tower as well. Believe the water tower total cost, I'm concerned with that, Mike, is?
Two point four million.
Two point four. We'll receive one point two million over, pro- a little bit over one point two million over two years. So, it won't cover the full cost of the water tower, but based on that infusion of revenue from those grants, federal grants, we recommend a zero percent rate increase.
And thank you, county.
Uh, let's see, metering software and the A M I is in there for their system in tandem with wastewater, just keeping down to the big stuff here.
Side engineering, that's for Mike's salary, right?
Yeah, the six hundred, oh, yes.
Is that you're sharing?
I thought you meant for the wastewater.
No, 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 no.
No, we're not paying Mike six hundred and fifty thousand.
No, I'm just saying.
I was gonna be an engineer real fast, Mike.
Yes.
Wastewater, water, everybody's sharing.
Yep, split four ways, general fund, which covers street, parks and rec, golf, and then the three utilities. Sorry, back down to the.
You were wishing it with a big number.
I am.
Tim continues to work on, uh, a new well for us, in addition to our current. Tim continues to work on, uh, a new well for us, in addition to our current well system, and that's the four hundred thousand dollars there. Uh, we have a water main replacement at Fairlane Avenue. Uh, another one on Second and Pearl and Third Street as well. Hillcrest and the new water tower. That makes up our capital projects for next year. And those are all identified within the comprehensive, uh, plan that we have just for water.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
This might go towards your street department maybe? Your west Isaac Walton entrance by Tenico? Is that gonna be addressed anytime soon? Someone is going to lose their front end.
The S curve?
It's like right as you come on there, I'm surprised a truck driver hasn't lost their tire yet, there's a pretty big divot on the south side of the street.
Off of Highway fifteen?
Yes. So I don't know if something like that-
There was money-
Because I don't even know if that's on the one to six.
There was money when John and I worked on that road, when we got that FEMA money.
I just took it today and it's not-
And there was five hundred or, are they seven hundred and fifty thousand, it's just set for that S curve. The state was involved in that, because we got one point eight million for the road, and then there was seven hundred and fifty when Hughes and I worked on that, and it was supposed to be allocated for updating that S.
Just with the rail road having that closure and truck traffic and stuff like that, there's a little bit more activity than just your Tenico at two o'clock exiting, and so, just something I must take a look at it.
Well, I'll take a look at that.
Thank you. So I didn't know if something like that needed to be placed into budget if it wasn't on the one to six year plan for-
It's probably just a reconstruction, that's for re-
I don't think she'd-
I know there was money allocated when Hughes-
There should be a light out there too. Just a hand.
I swear we've had this discussion at another budget time about this FEMA dollars, but-
Yeah.
I don't know. Come down and visit me and help me identify-
Yeah, get a light down there too, if anything, that.
That wasn't part of it. You gotta have a death first.
You can make it.
You gotta have a death first. Then you get a light. That's my weird one.
That that is the budget, I can walk through the CIP, I mean, we've already been here two hours and a half almost. I've covered all the CIP items in each budget, and so I can answer any specific questions you have on CIP stuff, but that is essentially the budget. The only thing I have left is, uh, potentially is comparability changes.
That was a question, that was my next question, what are your recommendations on that?
On wages, we can go through it, um, I think the easiest thing to show you to get the discussion started and see where you want to go with it. And if those that don't understand or don't know what comparability is, I can do a quick walkthrough, let's see. Show you this first. So we went out and did, let me go find a good one. Where is the police example, it's a pretty good one. Look at this one. Uh, there's not enough people. I wanna find one that has a lot of people, so you can see what we do. Library director, there you go. So this is how we do comparability. And so ultimately, we have an array of cities, the way you track your cities is you look for cities half your size or twice your size. That's what goes in your array. What you technically see here, this is just how I did it way back when, and I've never readjusted it, in alphabetical order, which is super annoying. Uh, you go in what's called concentric circles, and you hit the closest one that's within that array. So the closest one to us is Crete, then York, then Wahoo, then Skylar, then Grendagh, and so on and so forth. Then, for the position you're looking at, you make sure that the position is comparable, based on the number of things. This is done in a litany of different studies, but essentially, for a library director, it's pretty easy. You enter in the minimum wage that they offer and the maximum wage, you'll notice on the very first one I hit, the minimum and the maximum is the same. That signifies to us that that person is on contract there, and that is their contract amount. So we put in the same number for both. But you can see the wage range in, for instance, in York. From there, we input the retirement, each one of these retirements is different except for police. Uh, you'll see the percentage change up in the formula, seven percent, six and a half percent, six percent, five percent, six percent. That's the employer contribution. Not match, just, this is how much the employer does, it's different everywhere. The only one is police is a required seven percent, all certified officers. So, we do the same thing for the minimum and maximum wage to get how much per hour we can be contributing on those. And then this is, there's a litany of ways to do this, the way I've always done it is we find the maximum benefit under health insurance that I provide you as an employee. So most of the time, that is family coverage PPO. That is the highest one, not always, some of them don't have a PPO. But predominantly, so this is the highest employer portion of coverage for these different cities. And so, for instance, in the city of Stewart, the highest coverage and portion we match is one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. Then you give that an hourly rate value. Break that down, so you take this and divide it down into an hourly rate value. Line all these things up. And so, all benefits included, that is the hourly rate value for these individuals in, as a library director in these areas. This is what's called comparability, this is what the CIR, the Commission of Industrial Relations, requires by law. Rather than just looking at wages, you look at what is essentially a full benefit package then.
And you do these cities because they're relatively within a slight scale of our size of town?
Half a size to double.
Double.
And that's also required, this is all from the Commission of Industrial Relations. We don't go there, but this is the rules that we play by.
It's written, a lot of this is written into the law of what we have to look at.
So, and then you have to do the mean, the median, and the midpoint. And then what they want to see, and it's really just this midpoint number is what you're concerned with, I just have all these formulas stretched out here. This is your midpoint, that's your hundred percentile. And you want to land between the ninety-eighth and the hundredth second percentile. If you're below, that's not good, and if you're above, that usually means you would be looking at like a freeze potentially. So, here, for instance, on the library director, I ran all these numbers, got all of this information, all the retirement match, put in our information. And as you can see, the total amount involved is the ninety-sixth percentile. And so I've made recommendations to push those up into above that ninety-eighth percentile. So, that's comparability in a nutshell, what we have to do is process through a ton of information. We do a five-year study, the one thing I'll tell, and Nick can relate to this, and then also the committee that met, the Personnel Finance Audit Committee. There are two different gigantic studies we get. And we can look at them if you'd like, but essentially what we found is, it's the same people answering the questions for the study, and you're getting different answers. So your only, your data is only as good as the people answering the question, and something as simple as lifeguards. You'll go to the city of York, and in the two different studies, you have two different numbers. Some, one of them's correct, one of them has to be wrong, they can't be both. And so, you try to process through the information as much as you can, but Nick and I and our staff doesn't have time to essentially reduplicate another study.
No.
So we do the best we can with the information we have, we try to follow up on some things that are really quirky, but at the end of the day, we have to finish it and create the document that you should be to give you the best range based on the information we have. The yellow ones you see here that all match on the health insurance, those four, they utilize a health insurance system where it's based on your age. So there's no way to be like apples to apples. We used to have this really complex formula, but we don't have all the data points anymore. And so that number is the average of all the other blue ones. And we just stuck it in there to keep the average the same. So that's what we utilized across the board here.
So do you have like a list of the recommendations?
I do.
Comprehensive that we can look at?
I do. It is listed. So this is your, your pay steps that you guys normally see in your packet, that's approved with the pay organs. And I've gone through in red lines, so you see the black, which is the original wage, and then the new wage recommended based on comparability. I can walk through these positions, the administrative assistant, City Hall administrative assistant here in the municipal building, the Aging Service Commission, which is Katrina down there at the senior center. Uh, our meter reader, Michelle St. Louis, she's part-time. Assistant Public Properties Director, that is Brett Peterson, who oversees the guys and the crews are actively out in the field working on ball fields and things like that underneath Bob Corr. All of our maintenance workers on the street side are low. I compare those, there's, you see all three of them lit up. When we do that wage, it's one line, and I go look at, for instance, Beatrice has four tiers. We have three, some have two, some have one, and I just take all of them. The lowest at the bottom job, the highest at the top job. Because essentially, they're all operating similar equipment, they're all plowing snow, doing these similar things. Uh, police across the board, police, I believe, uh, is, we're in a, let's be honest, we're in a, a war to try and recruit police officers now. Where years ago, we were able to recruit for an opening twenty, twenty-five people to come test. We had four people test this time, the previous opening we had last year been one. And so all these wages are going up to try and compete and recruit police officers. And then also, when you lower, when you increase the lower levels, you'll comparably see the higher levels like captains, sergeants, and above move up as well. But I have all the data points to show on all of these. Actually, that wasn't even, that was police. And then you'll see, these are the salaried positions. Chief of Police, Police Captain, Finance Director, Library Director, the Code Enforcement Building and Zoning Director.
These are all under, that were going up?
Yes. And then the Civic Center Manager. All the ones highlighted in red, we can walk through any of them that you want. I can give you the total number annually, it would increase your total salaries across all funds, and if we go back and look at that cash statement, all included is seventy thousand, based on what we ran today, right Nick?
Now, is that with that three point five cost of living increase?
Before.
That's before.
Because the, the three point five is for everybody.
The three point five is everybody, and all those other ones I compared are all gonna move three or four percent on their own. Independently as well.
But they won't get the additional three point five on top of them?
No, they would.
They would.
They would.
Yeah.
This is just to adjust it to get a stable-
To get it where it should be based on comparability.
Because if I just adjust those, and all those other cities that I list for that job like Library Director, all do four percent, I'm more, I'm four percent behind again when I show it to you again next year. And I'm already behind, we have to begin even with them, and then move with them just to stay in line. So-
I feel like with-
What it will do to your budget or your cash reserves is it will really reduce this number right here by seventy thousand.
Total.
Totally. All included.
Well, I feel like in the market that we're in, you have to seriously look at it, because if you don't
Absolutely.
We are gonna lose employees, and replacing them is, we have to do this.
And, and we might have to, but I don't have to.
Well, don't.
Well, essentially, there are, there's liability potentially if you don't.
So if we don't do-
For instance, if they all unionize on us tomorrow, you'd, you'd be for- you'd be forced to pay those wages immediately after they sued you.
What, what do we need to do to move forward to implement the recommendations?
It depends on how you want to do it, I, we can do anything from, we move individual ones and vote on them to, we've looked at it, it's seventy thousand, make a motion and say includes all, all of them.
I'll make a motion budget?
It's not right now.
You would pull it from the cash fund to pay for it?
So this number right here-
General business.
Because it's in the business funds and the general fund, it's across multiple. This, this number, your cash reserves in total, fourteen million two forty-eight, would reduce by seventy thousand to fund all those adjustments. Because your, your deficit spending for it.
I make a motion, we move forward with all of them, to bring the comparable, bring up all the rates to be a comparable where you recommend?
Second.
The motion in second?
Wake up, Barbara.
Further discussion. See, now please register your votes. Display the votes.
Voting in favor, welcome back camper Colton and Miller Singleton Streis and Hendricks Mostert past state career.
The next thing is you might have to, with the trend on everywhere where it's going, we might have to put a line on it for sustain- for sustainability. We might have to start thinking about something, so we try to keep our employees, uh, so we might have to put a line on him in there for sustainability in the future.
What do you mean, what do you mean by that?
Retention, are you talking about retention?
There you go.
Well, when, and, when the personnel, when we met, we talked about different COLA increases, and we settled on sort of the idea of maybe bringing back to you all three point five. So where does that put us though, you kind of mentioned it when you began, where has three point five put us in terms of retention? Because that is our issue, and it has been and will be, retention and in terms of other cities our size, because you know, we can't compete dollar for dollar with Lincoln, but we can compete to an extent, and we can add in just living in Stewart has a benefit of itself, quality of life. So where are we, at three point five percent, and you said it was somewhere between?
Is it twenty thousand a half a percent, Nick? Do you remember this?
Yeah, forty thousand last year was a one percent increase.
Yeah.
So if we would go, you know, if you wanted to go from three point five, we talked about going to four, would four put us as an outlier? Or would four put us in with the rest of cities of our size that we compete with?
There's definitely communities our size that we can be with that did that.
What's Lincoln doing?
I'd have to look up, I didn't look at Lincoln.
I think we're good with- I think we're good, but I mean, I'm, we gotta start thinking, because I'm, I'm on a committee now for retention, and because too many businesses, it's a wage war. It really is. It ain't just here, it's everywhere.
Yeah, we're, we're competing across the board right now, we're quad tooth and nail at the city even to get employees.
So, just so I'm clear, are we talk, we had, we, I proposed a three and a half based on the, on the committee's recommendation. Are you saying you want to keep the three and a half, or are you saying you want to go higher?
No, I just brought it up because we had discussed going a little bit higher at the, at the committee, but-
Right, right, well, Josh said he agreed, but I didn't know if he agreed on the three and a half.
No, no, we, I agree, but I'm not saying for future.
He agrees with the three and a half.
Okay.
I agree, but I'm just saying, because next year, we're gonna be facing it. I'll guarantee it.
One of the items that was mentioned by the committee also was they wanted to see comparability, since you did approve the comparability ones, that's gonna increase the wages we're deficient on, to make them more competitive.
But keep in mind, like this, the comparability itself is, you know, so we go, so we, we're on the top end because we want to, you know, retain and attract, right? Well, then the next time everyone else does their comparability and they add our numbers into their array, they're gonna raise theirs up. So it's gonna keep catching, so, y- you know, i- i- it's fine to be on the top end if that's our goal, but just remember that's gonna keep going up every time you do this, because they're gonna keep catching us, they're gonna be pushing us higher.
A wage war.
So, just so you know, well, because comparability can be kind of a tricky, tricky thing to, to understand, so.
It's not great, you know.
So, the committee that looked at the, the cost of living, the three point five is what you guys kind of settled on?
I was kind of moving toward four, but I'm, I'm happy with what you guys want to do, but I, we can't punish the rest of the employees because we gave a bunch of common stuff.
I agree.
And, and we're not going to have this COLA again next year, we're going to have to be back down to something more reasonable unless the economy really does something strange, correct?
We can't predict that.
If we, if Nick can predict that, we gotta go do other stuff.
We're heading to Vegas right now.
But, you know, I don't know, um, you know, if, if three point five gets us there, or if we wanted to sweeten it, it's twenty thousand dollars to add another half percent.
Given the current economy and the way, what, what private businesses are paid and all those things, I would be more comfortable with four percent.
I agree.
Cost of living, we're, if we go this, we're, we're there. It, but the next would be a boost kind of to what Josh is saying, and so, then the next group's gonna do the same thing. And all the businesses are doing that right now, all the businesses.
Then we have to keep our city employees in the loop.
I- it's retention, because, I mean, you got companies that are putting stuff on billboards now, you got some, if you make so many hours that you're employed, you get a five thousand dollar bonus, I mean-
But you, you, you have an advantage, I think there, if your goal is retention and attraction, you're better off going up higher first.
Right.
Otherwise, you're gonna keep going higher, but you're chasing everyone else's already high rate, you're not gonna get the benefit you want.
Well, and we have good employees. Well, and we have good employees. I mean, let's keep them.
Well, and we pushed ourselves down by only having it at one percent last year, so now we're going to get it to nine or two percent.
So I would move to raise COLA to four percent.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. I think for the discussion. So if none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Welkin Beck, Camper, Colton and Miller, Singleton, Streisand, voting in opposition, Hendricks.
Nick, thank you so much. This has been.
Broke it.
Very well done. And I just can't imagine it. Thank you. And here, everybody else here.
Nick spent countless hours and continues, I cannot say enough about our department heads and specifically Nick's performance on this. Countless hours slaving through Excel files to try and make the process easier, both for the administration, for the council, and for our department heads. He's always looking to innovate this process. It literally used to be every single line was hand calculated and hand entered when I started four years ago. And he's built this whole system so I can watch in real time when we have a department head with us, how cash moves based on one project for the whole budget. And we continue to work on things like that. And by having this new payroll clerk, it's continued to give Nick the access and ability to do the high-end stuff to continue to, to put us in a really good fiscal shape. So, thank you Nick.
We appreciate you. You can take vacation tomorrow.
So I want to give you the outlook. We're going to go make all these budget adjustments and Nick's going to hide in his office tomorrow and just cringe at all the Excel files he's going to change. We're going to make these adjustments.
He's got two weeks, give him a week's vacation.
Oh, he's, he's good. We, our next anticipated meeting is September third and that would be the formal, is it the third?
No, it's actually technically the seventh.
The seventh would be the adoption one. And so that's really, we can still make some changes there, but that will be the night that we do the formal public hearing of everything else that goes with it. So if you have something that's tickling your mind right now, at least give us an idea or get ahold of us very quickly.
Don't spring it on us at the last.
Yes, don't spring it on us at that meeting because we're not set all of the public notices.
All of Nick's spreadsheets will just explode on his computer.
Nervous he got when he thought I changed something and it wasn't even his spreadsheet.
I appreciate you came in at zero at water because, you know, like John and I have always championed the whole idea three percent across the board rate increases are, you know, it's a bit much for everybody. So thank you for being here.
Anything else?
Should, should I be officially sworn in?
Yes, you need to come by. Now that we.
Thanks for voting all night.
I just, you know.
I was, I asked, I asked John, I said, are we swearing here, man?
Yeah.
I thought that was the first thing we were going to do.
Yeah.
Stop by. We got his email almost. We've been working on that. It's probably because of that email. Till we get that email, it can't be official.
Yeah, I can't be sworn in until I get the email or, okay.
We will have, uh, stop by our office.
I'll go to your account tonight.
Yeah, stop by our office, we'll have maybe.